Call the meeting to order for August 21st, 2019. And I'll stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Please be seated. Do you want to do the roll?
Yeah. Robert Topoma.
I'm here.
I'm here. Shelly Kidd.
James Christopher.
You're here. Do you have picks?
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda submitted?
I'll make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'll say.
I was going to say I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The purpose for this meeting and the reason we did it ad hoc is, just so everybody knows, one of the staff people in here has apparently been approached about some other job offers. And when she did it, Patty and I decided to take a look at it to see if we were in the ballpark on the other pay structures that we had. The last time we did it, I think for support staff, was about two or two and a half years ago. And we looked like we were right on the ballpark for what everybody was getting. But when she checked around, and I'll put words in your mouth.
No, that's not.
I'd be to speak up on it. It looks like we're not quite kept pace with the salary. So what Patty did, and maybe you have in front of you, is a sheet that she pulled up for some of the surrounding townships with their pay for their hourly wage for their deputy clerk position. And you can see we're a bit lower. The reason we wanted to have the meeting now is, we didn't think it was fair to have her wonder if we weren't going to do anything at all and not know potentially who's the other job opportunity or opportunities that she was looking at. So the purpose for the meeting is today is because the board sets all the pay rules. So we just want to know what the board would like to do in regard to that particular position, if you want us to adjust the salary at this time. And if so, how much? I think the numbers that Patty's giving you here show that we probably need to redo the salary evaluations for some of these in the spring, which is when we typically would do it. But frankly, we would like not to lose the person. She's doing exceptionally good job and actually doing kind of what two people were doing before. So with that, Patty, if you feel I misstate anything or anything you want to add, I'll open the discussion to the board.
Now, is that just for one or is that for both of them?
Just for the one right now. But I think, I think we need to look at the other like we do periodically in the spring when we do salary adjustments again.
Has anything been tossed out in terms of the new number?
No, no. I mean, I think Patty told her we were going to take a look at it.
Yes, that's all I said.
See if we could do something. And we just, we just don't want to leave our hangman for two or three weeks in the averages. They, well, they don't even want to talk about it. So I'm going to take one of the other offers.
If you, two, if you're closer to this three than I am, if you've broached the number, rather than put you on the spot, I mean, do you have a number in mind?
Well, we could. Well, I'm, well, this is just a suggestion. I'm open to whatever anybody wants to talk about. But I would think, since we appear to be under the mark for the comparisons that she's got here, I would suggest maybe we, and I think Patty, you said we called Holly. They said they were in the midst of getting there.
Holly, yes. Holly's in the midst of redoing their support staff also, as far as coming up with a pay scale and all. But she did send what they are paying at this right now, okay?
And Springfield, I think, has got somebody that's been there a very long time.
Springfield came in the highest. Their hourly rate was $24.95. But their girls have been there a long time, okay? So.
Do they maintain the same office hours that are maintained here?
No.
No. Springfield and Brandon are 40. Holly is 34.
Is Rose's 32 or anything?
32. Rose is 32 and Holly is 34.
So what is the girls?
Their rates, Rose's rate is 2233. Their yearly salary is 37154.
So these, these rates were adjusted for hourly equivalent.
Right.
So what if she made it right now?
She's making 270.
Okay. I just wanted to throw this question out here. Why is a part-time clerk making more money than our firefighters?
She's not part-time.
She's not part-time.
Perhaps she's only open 29 hours a week.
Yeah, but she's not considered part-time that as a full-time. But that position here and her hourly wages, as you could see, not comparative with the other.
Her hourly rate, wage works out to be $19.23.
Still, I'm going to ask the question, why is somebody in this office making more than our full-time firefighters?
The full-time firefighter pays exactly where this national average is for starting pay on a full-time firefighter. That, that much we know. We checked it in.
Or starting for your higher offs that have been here for a record number, they're still not making anywhere near that.
Well, the only full-time people that are starting are the ones that we had last December. And they've had the two raises in the meantime. They started at that national average. And the other, the third one that's been here full-time a long time is making quite a bit more than that. And so is the chief, obviously.
We're back to.
But, okay, my question is, how can it be considered a full-time position when the township is not open 40 hours a week?
Well, that's the equivalent of what our office is for the staff, is 27 hours. But their pay is based on what the hourly rate is. You could see, these other wages are also adjusted for the hourly.
We don't have copies of that. We don't, we don't have copies.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you get a copy of that?
I can give you a copy, yes.
Sure.
Do you have two questions?
Sure. We have one. Sorry.
When she applied for this job, not this job here, but this other job, when she was pending, did anybody discuss with her what her motivation was? Was it strictly, strictly monetary?
I, I haven't asked her. But I suspect the reason is, I know she's going through a divorce, so I think she had to take care of herself. That's my assumption, but it's a personal issue when I didn't ask her.
And I, and I think Carrie does a great job. I don't have an office here, I'm not here full-time, I'm not here every day. She must be doing a good job. That's why I did that, was really to that.
Exactly.
Yes.
I guess, kind of make double that, if you will. Is that, at least in my experience, if money is continually motivated, you'll never keep an employee.
No, and that could be. And I'm not, I'm not, I guess I'm not suggesting that we would raise it to what the highest hourly rate is. I think the question, she is due for another, for her last progression raise. And I'm just, if you ask me what might be an alternative, I'm suggesting maybe we at least bring it up to what the Brandon current hourly rate is. And that would be more than a normal raise. And then we'll just have to see what we come up with when we go through it in the spring for the rest of the position.
We don't have a merit-based program anywhere in this township.
Yeah, maybe we should have.
Well, and that's kind of where I'm going with this, is how do we approve or deny some procedure that isn't listed in our employee handbook? What do we, what do we base it on? Whether it's an approval or a deny? I don't think that we have written, at least I haven't seen it, a comprehensive yearly evaluation program that we as administrators, if you will, supervisors can assess and evaluate a particular employee that then they can go and request a merit system increase. And we can either approve it or deny it based on your evaluations. I don't, how many carries in there, what, three years?
Yes, three years.
Do we have any yearly evaluations or evaluations?
The office is so small that, I mean, I think the ladies that work here are intimately aware of whether or not we're happy with what they're doing with it and the performance of their job. And I will say that there's no two ways about it. In the case of Carrie, and I know in the case of the three cents, she was part-time. We've been exceptionally happy with what they do. Very committed, very reliable, and they've done exceptionally good work. Frankly, I think better than anybody we've had in the past. But we don't have a specific process, but I don't think there's one of them that doesn't have a good idea of whether or not they think they're doing what we want. Because if it's not, we're pretty glad, like, no, this has got to be fixed.
And I'm certainly not questioning how good she is. I, I heard nothing but glowing reviews from Carrie, and about Carrie. It kind of goes back to the motivation. People normally seek other employment or location, training, experience, different work environment. A lot of plethora of different things, other than just wages. And again, we don't have a merit-based program in place. And I can appreciate and respect your opinion on, you just see your work every day. And I'm not arguing that. I'm just, would just be cautious about approving something that we don't have a procedure for. We're, we're not a private enterprise. We're, we're kind of a government. And when we approve the budget, we approve the budget for the deputies get this, they weren't, they weren't several, they were together. So now to give one, one without giving one to the other, then it's like, if Carrie fills out an application, Dale gets a raise, it'd be a carryover because there's no evaluation process. If, and I guess where I'm troubled is that, where does that stop? It's like opening Pandora's box. Because anybody can come in and say, hey, I'm, I'm full-time, I'm doing a really great job, I want a raise. And if, how do we either approve or deny that? We can't refer back to the budget because we could be, in this case, making an exception. And where does it, where does it, where does it stop? And then what if we run into a situation where somebody comes forward and says, I'm doing a really great job? Could be just their opinion, I don't know. But, and we deny them some sort of national compensation. And it's, the finger pointing starts, well, you did it for her, or then you did it for him. Now you set a precedent. And now the township could, in my opinion, be faced with some sort of illegal action based on someone saying that they're being discriminated against.
Well, I suppose, that would be the case, I think, if you ended up saying, well, whatever it is, you got a job offer for this, we're just going to match it all the time. And I don't think, I don't think that's what anybody's suggesting or proposing. What I am saying is that I'm, she's due for a progression raise, anything. And I do think this information shows that we're a little bit behind from where we thought we were two and a half years ago when we looked at it for those same jobs. And so I think it would be reasonable for the most senior employee there to be able to get a closer rate to what some of these are. That, that's my position, but it's up to the board.
Well, there is not a merit, or there never has been, since I've been here. And I've been here, well, starting in 1997, and then moved over here about seven or eight. And I know things have been done this way in the past.
But in fairness, the merit part of it is, the ones that didn't work out, we got rid of them. I mean, they knew we weren't happy with what they were doing. They were given a corrective action. And if they didn't, we eliminated them, so.
So based on that, not to be argumentative or disrespectful, but let's say they're not a substandard employee, that their employee comes in and they meet the expectations of the job required. They're not stellar. How do we then compensate them, other than for step raises, without creating an issue?
Yeah, cool. We probably need to implement some form of merit going forward, I guess. But the problem's been, it's a little different than when you work at a large corporation because here we have such a small group, it's pretty hard to know what all the other is doing. And frankly, in most of the cases, the people we've had here in the past, they're pretty much all, I think, done what we've required of them, done it pretty darn well. Like I said, the ones that didn't, we actually got rid of. But, but that's the issue, is I didn't want this going without having an opportunity to talk about it.
And, and I'm sorry, I don't need to, I need everything up. I need, I need to solve this in my brain here. I don't know what the timeframe is. I don't know if she's had interviews. I don't know if she's had, if she's in the running, where she places. I, I don't know if this is an external circumstance, we need to act on this immediately to save her position and her in it. Or if maybe there's enough time to draft some sort of a merit-based program that we as a board approve, and then act on that as then it becomes a procedure and part of employee handbook.
That actually is what I thought of last night, was that. I mean, your system, as you, like, there's different courses, different things that you can take to, to maintain or get more education for your field. And to me, that's worthy of something. You complete this, you know, like, I went to the Certified Professional Treasurer, KF, Patty was Certified Professional Clerk. So taking those classes should be benefited opposed to, let's say, you just don't take the classes. There ought to be something that shows that you're putting more dedication, you're learning, you're trying, you're, you're doing what the job, you know?
I, I understand that, and I think she's clearly done that.
Oh, oh, gosh, yes. I have.
I don't think there's anybody in the office that would tell you that's worth attacking.
Going back to what Dale said, there's, this is not the same.
I would add this. I, I don't have any issue with bringing her pay level to a higher level. I just am cautious about how we're going to get there without creating a problem. That's my concern. My concern is the potential township. It's, it's certainly nothing against Carrie. I think she does a great job too. But I have a job here too. And those are my concerns, and I just needed to share those. Like I said, I don't object to anybody making more money. If they have to cohabit somewhere, well, I guess that's up to them. Like I said, I just want to use a little caution as to how we get this done so it just doesn't come back on us.
And going forward, I think that's, you know, I don't think that's something that we can do in a few weeks or in a month. I think that's something that has already been considered and going forward at the next budget, hopefully to have something in place. We are working with the ECTO people that we can put a process there.
I would like you to see us retain Carrie. I think she does a great job as well. And like I said, I wouldn't have any objections to increasing her or compensation. Again, I don't know what her timeline is. And I don't know if, boy, committed, I have a little trouble there here. I, I don't think we can really promise her that we're going to increase it to a certain point, because it's still going to have to be a full or approval. But I think we're all in agreement that she is probably behind the wage curve right now. I don't know if she would be willing to pass on an offer from this job that, I don't know, that even been offered. To stick around until we can catch up and make something different? I don't know what her timeline is.
I don't know, I didn't ask for that, so that's fine.
And I guess maybe that's something that could be discussed with her, just to find out just how eggs are genared, not that it really is.
Well, that's why we're here. And you have a preference for what you want to do.
To me, personally, my thought is, is if we can, if we could draft and put in place an merit-based procedure that we could fall back on to award somebody higher compensation based on an evaluation, I think that we need to start yearly evaluations. We're a small office, I get that. But because we're a small office, it's important that, that we evaluate our employees regardless of how many employees we got. If we could get that in, in place and approve that, I think, I think we're going to be good. Again, you know, I, I'm only, I'm only bringing this up to, in my opinion, to protect the township. I just don't want to create a problem out of it. It's, it's how do, how do we get there? That's, that's kind of the bottom line.
Okay.
I just have a couple of questions. First, what exactly does it occur to you?
She is the building administrator and the deputy clerk, so she helps in all of the functions that Patty does for the county and stuff that's in the township office. And she handles all of the building department permits, scheduling all of the inspections and stuff, and doing the plan reviews, the land divisions, combinations, all of that stuff goes through her. And she works with the planner and the planning commission for those issues, as well as taking the minutes on them on the BZA. And she does some things for me generally. I do my own stuff, but she does some typing for me and things of that nature as well.
Okay, so very hard work for a nine.
No, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, no, I'm not trying to discredit her character or anything. I'm just trying to get our answers from her resident standpoint as well.
Sure.
Now, my question is, and I'm going to play devil's advocate here, to kind of go off of what Dale was just talking about. She came to you saying she was propositioned another opportunity. Okay, well, not that if you know what that opportunity is or not, but why wouldn't she come at you guys asking for more money with a cushy job? Yeah, she may be below, but she's physically only in the office 27 and a half hours a week with every weekend and every holiday off. She's wanting a pay raise because I almost guarantee the job she's being offered has not got those type of things.
And actually, the benefit package on it was significantly better than ours.
Well, we're also very small.
And so was the other participant that was offering her job. You know, the same size range we are, they pay substantially more, they have all pretty much the same days, I think they work a few more hours, and that's why Patty, I think correctly so, normalized this by bringing it down to an hourly rate. So that if you work 10 or 20% more hours somewhere, that wouldn't be reflected in the rate by making our rate 10 or 20% larger.
Right, but I'm still confused on a whole how she works, how she's considered a full-time employee when she's only physically, this office is only open to the residents 27 and a half hours a week. That doesn't make her full-time. This building is not open on a full-time status like Springfield. You can go into their township 40 hours a week and be served. Here, we cannot. That does not go under the definition of full-time.
And that's why she broke it down to an hourly rate that's adjusted for, in the fact that if you work at Springfield, for example, you would work 40 hours instead of 27 here. So that would be part of the differential. We're not suggesting that the pay here for 27 hours would match 40 hours of pay there. Patty normalized it by saying 27 hours here works out to this much an hour, and 27 of those hours works out at this much an hour.
I think one of the issues I have is because the townships that you're comparing us to have a significant amount more of residents.
That's what I was just covering.
Holly Township doesn't, and, and Rose Township don't, does not.
Holly Township has 610 more residents compared to us on the 2010 census.
Yes. I don't consider that a significant difference from what we.
Our, the salary amount in this township is the highest compared to the other townships.
It depends how you compare some of it. For example, Rose Township, or not Rose, but Holly Township that you're talking about, for example, I don't know about all the other positions. But in the supervisor, the supervisor has a deputy supervisor that's actually a line item for the supervisor as well. So they're not only paying the supervisor, but they're paying a deputy supervisor. That person makes most of the appointments, goes to most of the meetings that I've been at with them, and does a lot of that work, much like an executive secretary, I guess.
Okay, and the, the supervisor's salary is not, it's tens of thousands dollars less.
It's about 6,000, I think, plus.
According to 2010, it was $27,269 less.
Okay, and this is the problem, is not checking everything. 2010 was when Dale Smith was there. Dale Smith was the supervisor that is and does have a full law practice in Holly. And he'd be the first to tell you, when he was supervisor, he only came in two hours, two hours a day. The supervisors paid there, and I was about, I think it's about 60 or 61. So Dale was a part-time supervisor, working two hours a day in the office, and that's why he got, whatever that number is you have back in 2010.
He was paid $33,768.
Two hours a day. So if you broke it down again, hourly, he was the most expensive supervisor I know.
Well, again, I stand, the, the salaries that we have in this township are exorbitant based on resident amount and the hours that we're open, 27 and a half hours a week.
Okay. Any other question?
I just have one question. I'm just curious why we're holding a special meeting for, like, deputy clerk or clerk, whatever her name is.
Because she.
When our firefighters, when our full-time fire guys still have no health insurance?
They're getting that, and I'm sure if they've talked to Chief Mason, we're real close to getting that finalized now. We've had the meeting with the.
Eight months.
Yep, with the person that's done it, and it would like to comply with the law that's written on the way we're going to do it. We probably have to make it effective the 1st of January, but Chief Mason has asked if he could take the money that he has in the budget and give them some money for the previous months. And I've said, once we go over the year run rate that's there, I'll offer even that too.
And when is that going to be taken place?
Well, he's supposed to, I lasted, I told him to set the meeting up for you and I to meet with him, go over the run rate to see if it's there. And if it is, then we're going to give him the money back for that part of it.
I just, I don't understand, like I said, I agree with Dale. Every company, regardless if it's a government or not a government entity, has some type of merit plan and performance documentation of all their employees.
We do that.
This should not be any different.
Okay.
I just made a few notes here. And I am kind of piggybacking on what you said. As far as this special meeting, I guess I just don't understand why this is even an issue. You know, in the private sector, this kind of thing happens. You know, when someone owns a company, they can be their employees, whatever the heck they want to be their employees. But when you work for the government, which I worked for open county for years, my husband worked for the feds, this is not how government does salary increases. You do not put them up for negotiation in, in line with what Mr. Casey said. It's not something that you want to get into the practice of, of putting it up for negotiation. That's opening a whole Pandora's box. If a township employee is out of employment elsewhere for higher compensation, or for whatever the reason is, they either take the job off or elsewhere, or they don't. They don't come in and say, I want more money, because the salaries are set. Just like when I worked at the county, salaries are set. My husband worked for the feds, salaries are set. To get out of that practice is opening a can of worms.
Well, the other, the other part you're missing though is, the last time we had a job opening here, we advertised for the job at the pay structure we had. And in the past, when we've advertised for a job, we could frequently get six, eight, 10, 12 people apply for it. The last time we got three. One of them, Seth Pointfling, probably the strongest candidate, I wouldn't work for that money. The second one, we all thought was not at all well-suited for the job. And we hired the third one. So clearly, what's happened is, our pay scale for that stuff, for those support jobs, hasn't kept pace. And normally, we don't do this. We do it once a year. The issue is, and I don't know if she will, but if she ends up leaving, we're going to have a difficult time getting somebody of the speed to where she is for quite some time. And as a result of that, I felt it was worth at least discussing with the board whether or not we wanted to adjust her merit raise that she's due for, or her salary adjustment raise that she's due for, and indicate to her that we place extra value on how good she's been. But if we don't, then people just, I guess, will have to wait for building.
I don't think that this really is out of line, though, as, as some others seem to think. It's within a buck of a lot of these other places. Now Springfield, I'm sure Springfield has a lot more folks in it, is that correct?
Well, they're, so they did. Their employees have been there a long.
You know, to them, they got 25 bucks an hour, that's, that's different. They're bigger. You said it's a long-term employee who spend their own. They're bigger, you said, as a long-term employee who spend their own lives.
And that's why we stated that, we don't think it's comparable.
Less than a buck, or maybe a little over a buck from the going rate for other townships. So I don't see where there's this huge discrepancy.
About a buck and a buck sixty, the closest one is a buck forty-seven, forty bucks. It's about a buck and a half.
What you're talking about, you're talking about giving a clerk a higher raise than what our firefighters got like a year ago.
Well, because the normal raises we've done here for the last.
So she's gonna get a fifty cent raise, because that's what firefighters got.
Is probably then two percent.
So is that what she's gonna get?
Typically, on salary adjustment, unless we see the job isn't correctly slotted, that would be the normal raise.
Because if you do that for her, what's gonna stop Shelley not to isolate you or exclude you? But what's to stop Shelley from coming into your office tomorrow saying, hey?
Shelley's an elected official, and those are done.
Okay, I mean, any of the other girls.
Well, they could, although the one is strictly part-time, doesn't come in every day. And the other one is a very new employee, so not clearly in the same position as the one that's been here three years. And I'm, listen, we'll do whatever the board wants, I'm just saying, if, I don't know if she will, but if, if she doesn't stay, we're gonna have a hard time filling that slot for the way one of them.
I'd like to just continue with things that other.
Sorry, okay, didn't mean to cut you off.
Other things that have to do with salary that I think you all need to think about very deeply before you make this decision, because it all comes into play. And I'm not trying to pick on trustees, that's my next subject, I'm not trying to pick on you guys, but I was thinking, it brings up another concerning salary issue for the township taxpayers. Obviously, everyone's salaries paid out of the township taxpayers. Exactly how much are the trustees compensated for these special meetings? I think this special meeting was ridiculous for the subject, and I think you'll gather that as I go through my list here. How often has a township conducted inappropriate special meetings? And by that, I mean improperly noticed ones. You tried to have this meeting last week without the proper notice being given? And thank you to the resident who said, wait a minute, that the Open Meetings Act is not being followed here. So how many other times has a township conducted inappropriate special meetings where the trustees get compensated? Because you guys get compensated by, by meeting, right? So that's a taxpayer's concern. And another salary issue that was previously asked, and this is kind of piggybacking on what this gal said, why aren't all township employees treated equally? I've never understood that, I never will. There should be equal treatment amongst all the township employees. And I asked, how many hours do the full-time township employees work? And obviously, it's twenty-seven from what's been said here. And are they still receiving their full health insurance stipend as well as the other perks when other folks who work full-time don't have any of that going in?
The staff support functions, whether they're in the fire department or the office, have been treated with the same benefit cost. So firefighters get the same stipend. Yes, and the support staff gets the same one.
I'm talking about all the township employees being treated equally, not just the support staff.
No, the management has been different, but we're bringing the other support staff positions up to the same dollar.
And it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong in any of these figures, do you still get fifteen paid holidays off per year, the week between Christmas and New Year's, unlimited vacation time? And if so, are there state requirements that govern that kind of thing?
There, I think your days off and stuff is right. Vacation time is, this is statewide for any elected position. You've probably heard of people when they say, the representatives of Detroit never showed up in Lansing and they get paid. That's what they mean by it. I have, I don't think there's been a year here that I've used what would be the normal vacation days I would get if I were an employee here.
But I mean, do the support staff get all that?
They don't get unlimited vacation days, no.
Okay, but they get the paid holidays, they get, do they have the insurance stipend to the rest of those workers? Okay, that's what I'm talking about this, and I want to clear on that. Because I think it's unusual for taxpayer-paid part-time employees, I'm sorry if it offends you, but I consider twenty-seven hours a week part-time to someone who worked forty-plus for thirty-five years of her life to be considered full-time. I do consider twenty-seven part-time employees to receive the generous full-time salaries and benefits that are enjoyed by rural township office-only staff, which again does not include the full-time rural township firefighters that she brought up who work more than forty hours a week.
The firefighter support staff gets the same sort of benefits for health insurance.
No, I'm talking about firefighters, though.
Oh, the part-time firefighters?
No, 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 no.
Our full-time guys have no health benefits?
They do, you get three thousand dollars a yearly gig. I know that's not enough, that's what's being increased, but they get three thousand.
The full-time guys don't feel the same insurance stipend that the twenty-seven hour per week people who work here at the township hall get. That's my point, and maybe I wasn't making it clear. But those, I consider that there are time gals that work here twenty-seven hours a week. They get, from what you just said, the full-time health insurance stipend, all the other perks, the paid holidays, yada, yada, yada. They get all that. And my problem is, again, it's unequal amongst the township employees because the full-time firefighters who work over forty hours a week don't enjoy even half of those benefits. And that's why I'm talking about equality amongst all the township employees.
I think their vacation days and holidays are the same for the department.
No. Yeah, yes, my understanding, no, and you can answer that better than I could, but my whole point here is township office should be serving the residents of the township. And you've done such a great job for so many years, years and years, twenty-some years. The township has done such a terrific job, and I don't understand the trend of the last couple of years. It's a very disturbing trend.
I don't think this is the trend of the last couple of years. Most of this stuff has been in place probably at least, I don't know, eight, ten years? It's not something that just got done in the last year or two.
No, but I'm talking, let me continue here, because I'm talking about the basic services. And I'll give you an actual example here, and then we'll clarify what I'm talking about. Five years ago, a resident purchased a foreclosed log home that was constructed in rural township in nineteen eighty-seven. Okay, so it was built a long time ago. Insurance companies require specific information regarding the logs that are used in construction to determine insurance premiums. That's how they do it. The insurance company stated the township would have all the necessary information in their files regarding the construction. So inquiry was made. The township stated that the files for nineteen eighty-seven, as well as several other years, were lost or misplaced. Instructions were given to just check that, see if they turn up.
Do you know who they talked to or who it was, because I'm not aware of it.
It was Patty.
I looked for them when I was not here.
Those files were never located. The explanation that they were lost or misplaced was supposed to suffice as an answer. That doesn't suffice when you're paying sky-high insurance premiums because you have to pay on the most expensive logs they make logs home out of. Even though you know your home isn't made out of those, you still have to pay an exorbitant amount of insurance in a log home.
So your point on that is that somebody lost the records on that house?
Yes, they, she said go to the county. Okay, but it finished, she said go to the county. So they did, they went to the county. The county said, no, township houses those records, we know, we can't help you. So like I said, sky-high insurance premiums. Well, then, when it came time to have the sanitation company come in and pump the septic, it took them forever to find a stupid septic because, again, those records were missing. These are the kinds of things that the township needs to be doing, and the township needs to maintain, instead of having meetings like this, serving the residents.
I think we're mixing some apples and oranges here. First of all, if, if the records for that homeowner, I don't even know what's house it is, but if the records for that were the type of log, I would have assumed that they could have gone back to the manufacturers and said, what is the style of log in this house? They don't seem to have the records at the township. I, I don't know why some record was lost, but I certainly can't say that all the records are lost or we can't find them.
Well, Patty said for nineteen eighty-seven and several other years are missing, they don't know what happened to them. So what I'm saying is, the township is tasked with that, with keeping those records, with maintaining them. Those are the kinds of things the township residents want to have the township doing. Not having these special meetings, trying to negotiate something that should not even be negotiated because there's set salaries for these folks. And you said yourself, Mr. DiPomo, that creating cost-saving measures to benefit rural township residents is the top priority. That doesn't appear to be what's trying to happen here today.
Well, I, I think you're mixing issues and trying to say that's, that's clearly not the case. When I said that, I meant exactly what I said. What we try to do is find ways to save our residents money on issues they can't do themselves. That's why we did the gas project, which I can't find anybody in the country that's been able to do it. But my point is, that saves people seven hundred or a thousand dollars a year on their heating costs. That's how we save money. When we do projects like implementing the ISO, that's because as an individual, they can't do it, and so the township spent several hundred thousand dollars implementing the ISO facilities to make that happen, so that the homeowner's insurance could get down. That's the stuff, I don't think, I, I don't think the issue is, do we have one or two board meetings out of the north for some special issue and thereby we're being irrelevant and wasting the township's money because the trustees get an extra pay for that, two meetings? I don't think that's the issue. We're trying to look at the bigger issues that have more impact. And the fact that some record may have gotten lost, I don't know how, I don't know why. If we did, we would try and replace it, but if we can't, in that case, the person who had that house should have been able to go to the manufacturer and say.
They no longer exist. That manufacturer's out of business and has business in the nineties.
I want to interrupt. I build custom log homes, in all respect, where, I hope it's not you guys. But you know what? At what point, the records are close to thirty years old, most municipalities toss them after a certain while. Stuff does happen, regardless if it's burning them or growing them. And if someone can't find the log manufacturer, they haven't looked hard enough. And I'm just saying that as a professional log home builder, they haven't looked hard enough. It's not necessarily our responsibility, it's a great perk if we have it, but I don't think.
The county thinks this is township's responsibility.
It is, it is, but if it's lost its cost, it may even be purged after thirty years. There may be no reason. It would be wonderful if we could have that, and if it's a mistake, it happened, but I'm.
That hardly means that the township doesn't keep any records, even on septic fields.
And I'm just trying to give actual examples of things that the residents would like the township to be involved in and, and take care of. Like I said, I have a real problem with an employee coming in and saying, I have a job offer. My response would be, either take it or don't. That's your prerogative. But to come here and have a special meeting for this one employee to boost her salary, like I said, and I agree, it was a case, I'm opening a can of worms for other employees to possibly come up and say, Cindy Sue got a raise, I want a raise too, and if you don't, I'll sue you, because we know that happens.
But this is where we differ. The issue is, we have a very good employee, and when she mentioned this other job offer, I asked Patty, I thought we looked at this a couple of years when we were good, and she said, I'll go back and check. And we find out that for that type of job, we're not really quite where it is. And so I would not and could not just arbitrarily give her a raise, even though I think she is deserving of one, it requires a board decision. And so part of the problem is, when you have a government, you have to follow some rules. For me to bring this up, I need to have the board here to discuss it, and that's what we're doing. Now, I can't just do it or not do it. If I didn't do it and she left, everybody would say, well, why the hell didn't you tell us what was going on? Maybe we could have done something. So I think this has to happen, and this, in the complexion of what we're doing in the township, is a miniscule amount of money. These meetings don't happen, special meetings like this, every month. They're quite infrequent, I'd say if we have two or three in a year, it's.
I was gonna say, this is my favorite one.
Yeah, if we have two or three in a year, it's an anomaly. So it's, it's, it's part of the requirement for having a government to do that. I, if I had told you and Carrie left and I said, yes, she had an offer for more money, and I didn't even bother to tell you, would you have said, why the hell didn't you say something to us?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's really where we are. This, and this has nothing to do with the fact that somebody may have lost some building records, I don't know, or a septic field. Listen, when they do the septic installations, I can tell you, most people can't find their own septic tank because when it went in, they didn't bother to put a, what I do is a, you know, cement squares or something over the door so you know where it is. Sometimes they get moved ad hoc after they're done. It's the county that actually does the inspection on them, so most of those sanitation records are really part of the county records anyway, not ours. So I don't know what happened in that particular house, but that's ours.
That's what the county said when we went to the county, they claim they don't have that.
And, and if they don't have it, we may not have ever gotten it from them, I don't know. There's a lot of records that don't get probably processed the way they should be or have been somehow mislaid. I can't answer that.
I just brought those examples up as, as examples. I think you're making too much of them as.
Well, you're the one that made something of them, it's got nothing to do with the reason we're here today.
No, I brought them up as one example of what the township residents are looking for.
And normally, they get it when they come here. Normally, when they come here, most residents get that. If they ask for, where's my septic field, or do you have prints on my building? The ladies in this office go down, and they go through the archives, and they try and find whatever they're looking for. And if we have it, we give it to them. But I can't tell you that, I don't know, is that one in a thousand that we didn't have, or one in ten thousand? I don't know. That doesn't mean that they're not doing the job they're supposed to. It means somewhere, somebody that worked here in the last thirty years may have filed it in the wrong place. And I don't know what to say, stuff happens. And that has really nothing to do with this issue here tonight. And if they couldn't find their septic tank, I don't know what to tell them. They're not that hard to find, usually you just gotta look for the green grass, they're pretty obvious, really, are.
I've got a comment. So regarding maybe all of what we're talking about, so this is gonna be part subjective and maybe part objective. I think part of the reason that we're all here is the community is a little bit of a good oddity, in my opinion. There's a little bit of warmth when you come here, it's not as anesthetic as, say, Bloomfield Township or Panay or Godfreyville Detroit. And part of that too, it's a semi-rural nature of our native. And I think we're here, not that we're being forced, but it's perhaps symbolic that some systems that establish objective standards, that's what I'm hearing from everybody, aren't in place. They need to be, I think we can all probably realize that. So this is an odd case. Subjectively, I'd hate to see her leave because harmony in the office sometimes is more important. And bringing someone new could introduce a cancer at the right rate, and everything is gonna suffer. So my opinion on this is, I think it would be wise to retain her. I don't feel that any of us are being held hostage on this, that they're holding a gun to our head. It might be the right thing to do. And then certainly go forward, let's put in place those objective standards, I would say as soon as we can. And we should probably take a good look at the fire department, which I know we're doing as well. And, and I think, I think that solves this in the short term. I'm not sure, I'm not as close as you three are, but maybe, maybe that's the solution here.
You said she's close to being evaluated anyway for a normal type raise?
Yes, next spring.
Next spring?
That's when we do it, in April as well.
So if you give her this raise now, does she also get yet another raise in the spring?
That would be depending, I guess, on what we came out with the salary study and how we do the evaluation going forward. I mean, could she potentially, yes, she could potentially.
And you don't think that would set a precedent for someone coming to the board saying, I want a raise. Cindy Sue got a raise, I want a raise. You don't think that would set a precedent?
Your board environment could have your office requesting the same thing too.
Well, I, I don't think it's the issue in the rest of the office here. And the fire department's pay for the full-time is exactly started where the national average is. I've had that discussion with the chief. He's checked around with the other fire departments, that seems to be the going rate starting. The issue of looking at the shift in on-call people, or what people call volunteers, is something we're gonna look at next spring as well.
So I agree, it's gotta wait till next spring, but this one employee gets a special meeting because you don't want to have to worry about filling that void in your office?
Well, because we do have to keep the office running, so when people come in, they can get questions answered. There's multiple functions that, that she's doing, that if she's not here, I'm just gonna tell you, it's going to take a year or two for somebody to get up to that speed. I think she's exceptionally good, and I think the township is better off if we can keep her subject to not going out of line with what we're. And I think the township is better off if we can keep her subject to not going out of line with what we really should pay. And that was the reason for getting these other hourly rates. I think part of it is trying to say, if you have a good employee, do you wanna keep him? Like, we wanna start writing merit-based raises? I, I don't think that's a problem, because I really think the staff in this office is fully aware when we're happy with what they're doing and not. And when we get really unhappy, they don't stay here very long, because we end up getting rid of them. But in this particular case, this person has repeatedly gone over and above. And I think that she's worth trying to keep, because it keeps the office running. She's a good personality mix. We've had this office in the past where we've had a couple of personalities that didn't work. And I'm telling you, it's hard to get anything done effectively.
That's just doing business, though. No one's irreplaceable. And you're not always going to have the magic combination of people that are going to get along.
Well, when you have you want. It's better to have a.
Pardon me?
Wouldn't you want that?
Well, sure, you want that, but it doesn't always work out that way in reality. That's what I'm saying. In reality, it doesn't always work out.
But we have an opportunity to retain it, and it is working well. And I think it's to the township and the residents' advantage. Now, I don't know if what we would come up with giving her would even make the difference. But I guess the question is, again, if I hadn't said anything to the board, and she just walked in and said, I left, and I said, yes, she had a better offer, and I didn't even wanna bother you with finding out if we wanted to try and keep her, I think you would have said, why the hell didn't you tell us what was going on? Unless I'm wrong.
This is all, this is all, I think it's great we're all participating in this. And we gotta have some resolution here very quick, what we're gonna do.
I think it's only, I agree, Mr. Pies, I think it's only, you know, where this is gonna fight, should we add, down there?
No, as always. If there's any other comments, otherwise we need a motion to do something or nothing, whatever. I mean, I.
I guess if I can just, just repeat what I said. If we can put, if we can put a merit-based system in place where we then have a procedure to follow, perhaps we can make an adjustment. I don't know what her, I don't know what her timeframe is. And, and one of the things that trouble me is, I don't know who she informed about this application that she filled out, this job position. I don't even know where she is with all that. It could just be, you know, going, she may not even be intended, I have no idea. But I would have liked to have been a little more informed as to what her motivation is. And, and like I said, people leave jobs for a lot of reasons. If it's just a monetary issue, it's not gonna decrease her workload, it's not gonna change her, her distance that she drives to work, it's not gonna change the environment, it's not gonna change any employee that, that she's working with. What's her motivation? More training, more compensation, a better job? I think if someone wants a better job that pays more money, then if they have a job offer, they should probably go there. But I would agree that we're, we're kind of behind the power curve here on, 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 on pay. I, I would agree with that all day long. However, again, is, and I, I'm not saying that she doesn't deserve more money. I think she does an incredible job. How do we get there without creating a problem? That is my issue. It's my own issue.
My comment, Dale, is that problem could exist. It doesn't appear right now that that's gonna raise its head. It might be possible to give the increase. And all of us move forward quickly for some objective way to do it, and your problem won't exist. If I'm being correct.
And, and I can appreciate you, your thoughts. It's, I don't know anybody that can predict the future.
No, it's crashing.
I mean, it, it doesn't appear that right now. But how long is it gonna take before it does appear something?
Well, how long will it take the board to come up with an objective? How, you guys payroll plan, but that's not the.
A merit-based.
Yeah, merit-based.
I, I, I don't know. I would think we should start working on that.
Yeah, we have to believe that it'll play somewhere that we can evaluate within sixty days, come up with something.
Right, takes me back to, I don't know where timeframe is. I mean, if she can't wait sixty days, with really no guarantee.
I don't know, I didn't talk to her personally about this. I just, I'm aware of what's going on, and that's why.
I, I had the board get a little, little set up with her and just kind of, lack of a better term, interviewed her to find out just exactly what was on her mind and what prompted her to fill out that application in the first place.
I mean, I'm not asking.
I'm sorry.
It's quite an increase in pay.
But it's just pay.
It is just pay. But, like I said, when we started looking to look at it, when she said she put in her resume for the new job. We thought, well, let's take a look. This is what we came up with, so, and what brings us here today. I had that jump on me when I worked out there for someone else. Went up to by paying, and had that bed with the township that long. So I do understand what everybody's saying.
And, and she hired into a job knowing what the job was, what the expectations were, and what the compensation was. And, and again, I don't wanna sound like I'm criticizing her, or, she does a great job. Again, I struggle with how are we gonna get there? I would feel more comfortable either having a merit-based system in place now or waiting for next budget in the spring to then bring everybody up to a higher scale, should we think that that need to be adjusted. Give me a minute, we still think.
Okay. No, I don't know.
When was her last raise?
Last, uh, April.
This last April, as in like, three, four months ago.
Oh, wow.
Because that's when we do our raises here, April first.
So this is a few months later. Four months later, she's asking for a raise?
Wow.
Well, I, I guess, I don't, I don't wanna put this in the wrong perspective. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I didn't actually talk to her. But I think what she said is, there's this other job, I've applied for it, and significantly more. And I think she's, I'm confident she's on the fast track if she wants it. And, and I say that because unknowingly, I had talked to the people at the other place. And before I ever knew she was applying, said, we got some great people in the office, and Karen's wonderful. And so I think they're confident. So she, she got this, I believe, opportunity. And when she came to us, we looked at it and said, wow, it looked like a law firm, even while we were paying. Which prompted us to look at, before we called you, the other pays of similar jobs. And that's the research that Patty did. We also normalized it back to an hourly pay, because some of the difference in the pay, the total pay would be based on, if we're working at forty hour, thirty-five hour, thirty-two point seven hour. So that's why we normalized it to an, to an hourly rate. And I think that's a more accurate comparison than saying the total hours. So with that, I said, well, we need to ask the board, because we can't just do something. We need to ask the board what we're going to do. And that's how we get to today's meeting.
I think there's a lot of raises in a very short timeframe. I know in, at Oakley County, there were several years we did not get a raise.
There were several years here, five years?
Yeah, that the way that they took money back from us is they required, after twenty years, I had to start paying for my healthcare insurance.
Well, and, and we've, we've had five years with no raises as well.
But then did you also get hit in the pocketbook by getting less money, even if you didn't get a raise?
We stopped, we stopped paying for full moon cross blue shield, because it got up to about twenty-three thousand dollars a year. And we adopted the state guideline. And honestly, I think we're the only township I know of anywhere around here that said, we'll pay whatever the state guideline is in that set period. And that number's supposed to be what the state considers eighty percent of a healthcare premium. So we went to that. And, and that's, that's the numbers we're using, because the state has said, if we ever put statutory revenue back in for the rest of the townships that we took away some years ago, unless you comply with that, you cannot even begin to qualify for it. So when they passed that rule, we adopted it and said, we're gonna do the eighty percent number. And I, I don't think there's a township around here. So when you make a comparison and you go back to, say, two thousand and ten, that's almost a decade old information. It's easy to say, well, you're making so much more in these jobs than somebody did in two thousand and ten. Yeah, in two thousand and ten, I don't think we were even given raises for four or five years ago. And we probably had health insurance that far back around then that was based on whatever the premiums were, until they got so onerous, we couldn't keep up with them. So I, I think we have done the important things for this township to be fair to the employees and fair to the township. And the reason I say that is, we have a lower military than just about anybody. I think we have as good or better services than just about anybody on a number of issues. And we have done major projects that have cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, all of which was raised not from the taxpayers, but by taking underutilized resources that we were getting nothing out of. This township now gets more money from the projects that we have done since I've been with this board in this township than all of the tax revenue from every piece of property in this township in all year. That is how we got those other projects done. So I think we've been clearly focused.
You have had great deals already years.
Well, and so my point is, to this is, we get a little farther down the road. The first things we did were projects that we thought returned major money to the residents that they had no way of doing their own. When I moved out here and I asked the gas company, and they said, yeah, we can give you gas, it's seventy-six thousand dollars to get it down the road. And I found out a whole bunch of people were in that position. That's why we did that project. And did it for forty percent less than anybody else could have got it done. Well, we did those projects, and then we did the fire station project, and the wells, and the sirens, and all that stuff. Then we started looking at the pay, and when the healthcare got too high, we throttled that back down to the eighty percent number. And I still don't know a township around here that does it. So I, I think on the major issues, we've done a very good job of containing costs or reducing them for them. That's why I get a little upset when I say, well, you have a meeting. Well, it's, it's systemic to the function of a board. I can't, in my mind, I think she's worth it. I think to the benefit of the residents and the township, we should give her some larger adjustment on this raise. And I think it's good to have, going forward, a merit-based appraisal system, which can't be that hard to put in. But I honestly think the ladies that work for us are fully aware of what we think about their job performance. Because when we don't like it, we end up getting rid of them. It's just that simple. So I think it is better for the township not to have people come in and wonder, did that get misfiled? Or did I, I cannot get the answer to that, because the new person's gonna take six or seven months to get even remotely close to the proficiency she has now? I, I think that's a difference. I think it's worth, in my opinion, giving her something as a indication that we're going to adjust it based on merit going forward, and we'll reevaluate it in the spring, like we do almost every year. And I think that's a better way to go, and I think the township is better served. But I don't make that decision by myself. It takes a majority of this board, and I have to ask them. So you might not want this meeting, and you might say, oh my God, they wasted a couple hundred bucks. But I think in the big scope of things, that's peanuts. That's the check and balance that says, Bob DiPaolo doesn't make the decision in Groveland Township unilaterally for everything that happens, and everybody better like it. It's not the way it's done. It's what does the majority of this board think? And generally, we do our homework, come to a condition where we think we all have seen the facts we want answered, and make that, and most of the time, I think it's almost always been universally approved. But I'm all for having that. And I would not cut out this meeting, even if it does cost a few hundred bucks, because they need to have the opportunity to hear themselves.
I just thought it could be a regular meeting, it not have to be a special meeting, where more residents would be able to attend.
And I understand that. And the reason I did it is because when we looked at the difference in the dollars, it was pretty staggering. I don't think there's anything else that could be motivating this change, except the dollars. But when she looked at it, she came up with a sum like thirty-five or forty percent increase. I did not feel it was fair to her to say, I can't even tell you until next spring if we can fix it. I thought it was reasonable and fair to ask the board, do you think this is something we should do to try and keep a really good employee that we've had? I'm being as honest as I can. I think that several of the ladies that work in this office now are absolute, I'm not allowed to official something, so. Absolutely the best head and shoulders we've ever had. I don't know a more committed group of people. I can count on them, I know you don't work today, but can you come in and do something for me? I need it real quick. And they'll get it done. I think that deserves some indication. Now, if the board disagrees and says, too bad, if we lose her, we lose her, we'll start all over again and hope we get somebody good, knowing that at the pay scale we have right now, the last time we put the job ad out, we got three applicants. One said, I won't even think of working for you for that money. The second one, we thought, I hate to say this, wait, was just a loser, okay? And we took the third one. So I don't know what we'll get. If we don't adjust this pay scale and she does leave, I think we're gonna have to hire somebody. And if we keep it to the pay scale we got, I'm gonna tell you, I doubt we're gonna get anybody. The deployment economy right now is very good for people. They're very low unemployment, all-time record low unemployment. And that's shown up in the last couple of applications we've had, where we can't get people. I think it is a bigger disadvantage to this township to have somebody come in and say, can I get my building plans? Do you have them? And have somebody starting out new there that will be at least six months to a year before they really know how to find the stuff or what they're looking for. I don't know why that one person's plans aren't here, but they're pretty darn good diligent about putting stuff down there. We've had a bunch of it, microfiche. But I don't, I can't tell you what happened thirty years ago. And I certainly can't guarantee you that that same exact thing might not happen again. There are a lot of plans to get built here. And another example is when they built the development, like the one off of Groveland Road. They show where the road's supposed to be, but then the as-built are not always the same place. It's just, it's just the nature of the beast. I think they do a very good record of, job of keeping the records here. But stuff gets lost, and I don't know how to tell. I can't even tell you who lost them thirty years ago. And I've been here in some form or another for forty years. So most of the stuff that happens when people go and say they can't find something, you know, who they, who's the old guy that actually knows what happened? Start looking in the mirror, it's me. Because they don't know what happened. And you have to have somebody that has historical data on it. And I have most of that, because I've been involved in all three master plans. I've been involved in most of it. But I, I don't keep every record. When somebody, the error that made in the listing of this, I'm sure there's others that have done it. We posted it out the door, we announced it at the last meeting. It, it was inadvertently, she did ask for it, but it didn't get put on the website. So we redid it again today. There was no effort there to try and not tell anybody what was going on. We mentioned it in the meeting last time. I think, I thought then, I think now, still, the right thing to do was ask the board for the opinion, because it's not my decision to make. The board, at least the majority of it, has to agree. And I think in this particular case, there are always nuances. But I think if we don't do this, maybe we lose her and send the wrong message. But if that's what the board wants to do, we'll do it. Just be aware that when people complain that something doesn't get done, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes through her desk. And she is key to getting that done. And everybody in this office thinks she is top-notch. I can't describe a more dedicated person. If she leaves, I will personally be upset, because I know it's going to be problems in here. But if that's what the board wants to do, that's what we'll do.
If I could just make. And, and you touched on it a little bit there, is that these are good economic times. There's a lot of, there's a lot of good high-paying jobs out there. And, and I don't care if it's private sector, I don't care if it's government like we are. There is a time to have to maybe change a procedure or adjust the business that we do. I would agree with that all day long. But I think we need to have a way to do that in that merit-based compensation program.
I agree.
It's an adjustment. I think it's timely, I think it can be effective. I think hopefully, given the time that we have, it'll solve the problem. And allow us to go forward based on a procedure to deal with future requests.
and allow us to go forward based on a procedure to deal with future requests.
I agree. Um, listen back.
As long as you don't think three raises in a one-year period is going to pique anyone else's curiosity and, "Wow, I haven't got a raise, maybe I can get one."
Well, she wouldn't actually be getting three in a year, she would be, here's what she would do.
Be thrown out in April.
Well, but the second April's the new fiscal year, so it's the one-year raise. What she'd have is, let me, I'll ask you. The one-year raise, and she is due for a merit raise or whatever you want to call it, salary adjustment raise, now anyway. When the ladies are hired.
So you do have some kind of plan in place for that?
Yeah, it takes them about four years to get it, I think, isn't it?
Four years.
Four years. There are several increments where they normally would get $500 a year. What we're talking about is, do we want to take the one that's coming up now and make it bigger to get it closer to what the pay should be? Because we looked at this about two and a half years ago, Patty and I did, and said, "Jeez, I think we're exactly where we should be right now, just right in the bullseye." It's this issue that brought it up. And I think sitting here and saying, "Well, she's supposed to get 500, we're not gonna give her anymore, and that's just too bad, and if we lose her, we lose her," I think is bad to the township because then we have to get somebody new and start training her all over again. And I'm gonna tell you, it takes a couple of years to get anywhere near as proficient as she is on it. She is, I personally think, in the 30 or 24 years I've been the supervisor here, the best staff person I've seen in that office. She's just that good. And she's doing a lot more, and you don't have to ask her. She self-initiates stuff. I don't have to worry about it. Something happened and nobody told me about it, and then they ask me a question and I don't know it. She knows what I need to see, makes sure I'm copied on it without me asking, and she does everything we've asked her to do, done in a timely manner. I don't know what else to say. She's that good of an employee, in my opinion. And I, and I thank you ladies of all. I mean, she works with Patty far more than me. My, my, my interaction with the ladies in this office tends to be, "I got a letter I need, can you do it for me? Who's got some time?" That's the extent. I do, I don't have a deputy like Holly does. I do all my own scheduling and appointments and all the rest of that stuff. I don't bring people to meetings with me. I do that myself. But she's very good at getting anything we need done. And Patty's the one that works with her on a daily basis, and I know she interacts with you on some stuff. I don't know what to say. If you have an employee that is that good and has a job opportunity, and I'm sure the only reason is, it's the money because the offer was for about 40% more. And I'm not suggesting that. But I think you have to take a good employee and say, "Okay, she's got a regular adjustment coming up, can we bump it up some?" So that she understands, we appreciate what she's doing, knowing that next year we will have implemented for April the merit-based criteria, we'll cover it with each one. I have a problem with doing that because I honestly think every lady in that office has a real good idea of whether or not we're happy with what they're doing or not and where we think they need improvements. The problem is, when we get one that doesn't work well, we've had a couple, we get rid of them. They just don't stay here that long. We, I mean, we had, we had one that we hired on an interview that all of us, when Pam was still here, thought, "This is head and shoulders the best candidate." Was less than 90 days, he said, "I cannot believe all three of us thought she was that good. Is the wreck of the hesperus, she's gotta go." And we fired her. I don't do it easily because typically when somebody does something and we don't like it, after everybody calms down with whatever, it doesn't happen, we try to say, "What can we do to get that problem fixed?" So you try and get somebody to fix what they're doing wrong first. But some of them just don't, and within 90 days, we get rid of them if they aren't good here. I just, I don't think taking her regular raise that she's got coming on her progression and bumping it is a bad thing to do to at least show that we're interested. Maybe she'll leave anyway, I don't know. If she does, we're gonna have to have a meeting with a merit raise and discuss whether we want to open up the job for a higher pay because I'm telling you, we know we're not gonna get very many candidates and most of them aren't gonna be willing to do it.
At the same scale.
Exactly.
I just, I'm just telling you, the outcome of not doing it is we're gonna end up with a mess in the office. And that's probably what happened someplace back in 1986 or whatever, where, I'll bet you that file is somewhere in this building. But God only knows what box it's in, right?
And if I could answer the file, we did have to go back, wasn't it in '08? The state building department licensing came down and said, "You can no longer file by Sidwell's. You have to take all your files and put them in order by addresses." So all of that was pulled out, so there could have been a missed file. So what I said, ultimately, I'm like, every now and again, yeah, we come across one that's somewhere where, no, it should have been over here, you know? So that's where I was coming from. The other thing is, is sitting here looking at all this a little further, there was a typo, Brandon's three years are 2006. So the board's gonna do something, that would suggest a dollar raise. Yes, which would take the pay for our employee to 2023.
My question for my though is.
You think, I wasn't trying to catch up.
Oh, no, you're fine. Bob, you said earlier that you hadn't talked to this individual, that you were, you had found this out.
And that was just a particular item about it.
Right.
Patty talked to my team.
Right, so my question to you as a supervisor, she is your employee. So if that was brought to your attention, why did you not go sit down with her one-on-one and ask her? Because I find it hard, if I start looking for jobs, there's more than just the money aspect of it. There's, there's usually another itch that is not settling well with her, either in the office or with a certain individual or whatever it may be. I find it very hard that it's only the hourly pay. And our supervisor and ask for boss, I feel you have a due diligence to sit down with her and iron that out before any decision is made.
Let me clarify a couple of things you're wrong on. She's not my employee, she's Patty's employee. She's the deputy clerk. Patty's the one that talked to her and had the discussion. And I didn't because I didn't think some of it would have dealt with some personal issues that aren't mine. And ultimately, the decision to what we do is not mine, it's the board's. But she is actually Patty's employee, is the deputy clerk. So she went to Patty, that's who she should have gone to. Patty had some discussion with her, I think she's pretty confident. The issue was the money, and it was, like I said, 35 or 40% more money. It's pretty, we're confident from discussions we've had that she's very comfortable with the office environment and the people in here and the working relationship. Because the one thing I can tell you, even though I don't have the direct contact anywhere near the extent that Shelley or Patty do with the ladies in the office, when it doesn't work, I'm fully aware of it. And the last time it happened in this office, it was extremely unproductive and aggravating to be in here for probably close to a year. We tried a number of the typical things you do at a company, like brought somebody in, suddenly learn how to listen to people and all that, and it actually made it worse. I'm gonna tell you how I fixed it. I took the two ladies who were having a problem after I let the clerk try everything she wanted to try first, and I had them sit down in my office, and I said, "I'm absolutely tired of this bullshit." Where I worked, this stuff wouldn't even be discussed. So if you don't like it here, the door is there, let me know, we'll replace you. And it all stopped. Now, I don't like to do it that way because we tried to do it the nice way first. But I'm telling you, when that office doesn't run well with that smaller group, it melts down. And the result of that is, people coming in can't get their questions answered, they can't get their documents. I don't want us to tell you. I think we're potentially, this may not work, maybe it won't. But I think the reality is, we need to make some adjustment to that pay scale anyway. So I agree, let's put up a merit-based plan. I don't have a problem with that. I think there, I don't believe there's an employee out there that couldn't tell you exactly what we think about them. I really don't. But it's such a small group, we work so closely, it's very easy to understand what's going on. I don't have a problem with documenting it and using it going forward, I'm all for that. But I think if we don't do something now that at least shows we understand a very valued employee has worth to us that we don't want her to leave and at least made some attempt at it, I think the outcome of that's gonna be, a high probability, if she doesn't leave right now, it'll be soon, and maybe she will anyway, I don't know. But either way, we have to adjust it. I would hate to say, but we don't want to give her a buck an hour now. But in order to get anybody to answer the job ad, we gotta raise the pay at least a buck an hour just to get it going.
And I too agree with the pay scale. I mean, this is something that I had kind of been waiting, I've been there very long. I mean, sitting as a board member, but looking at some things going forward for the budget year to say, "Hey, let's look at this." Because there were a few times when, you know, I kind of wished, uh, some of this would be eliminated if we just had set steps and degrees, and then after that, you know, it goes wherever.
This went through the process exactly the way it should. Her employee talked to her, she brought it to me, and I said, "It's not our decision, we gotta take it to the board."
Ms. P, do you have a deputy treasurer?
Yeah.
Is she going to have her nose on a joint because the deputy clerk is getting a raise and the deputy treasurer isn't? I mean, I think it's a crossing right now.
I don't wanna butt in, but doing some quick figuring, the start, looking at Brandon's again, the starting is right where it should be, pretty much. That puts Gail into the 24,000 range where she's started. And she too is due for a stampede raise.
As the deputy treasurer?
Yes, I'm sorry, deputy treasurer of Gail. She was at 24.5, she started, what, was it December, Shelley? I think it was December. So her sixth month was June, and she'll be at 24.5.
And if we adopt a merit-based program, then she can have her nose on a joint, but she still has to perform according to the merit standards for an increase.
Exactly.
There you go. And that's kind of where I was going with every employee here. Without that, we have no vehicle in place to move people forward, either approve or deny compensation because we have no way, we have no procedure in place to be able to do that. So once we have that, it's effective across the board to everyone. So they have to meet a certain standard. So I guess me, I would encourage the board to adopt or reform, create a merit-based program, and that's something easy, as quickly as we can. I would certainly vote for that, again, whether it's a private enterprise or where it's the government. Sometimes you just have to make an adjustment, and I think we're there, you know? So I think we need to put something in place, and I think it needs to be put in place as quickly as possible in hopes that we can save a stellar employee from leaving the township. Like you said, she may leave anyway, the timing may be wrong. But if we're gonna bump her salary a whole buck an hour for 27 hours, that's lunch money to me, but I'm in a different, but I'm in a different position. I'm in a different position. So a buck an hour can mean a lot to her, and I understand that. And that was probably her motivation to seek an application and potential employment in another location. So I think that the quicker we get this in place and the quicker, I think we all agree, that she deserves it. I don't think it's gonna need to scratch our head whether she meets the standards or not. This is, I think, the issue in this particular case. Frankly, if we were at the mark that we should be based on the others and she was at that mark, I would say, "There's nothing you can do. It's just if you don't like it, you go, rough it out and go through a next one." The only reason I felt it warranted the board discussing this is, I think she's an outstanding employee, and I think we're below the mark. And so that's why I think we need to fix it. And I don't think there's anybody here disagreeing, but.
So I have a recommendation, I don't know if this gets turned into emotion or not.
That's up to you.
Well, maybe it will, you'll have to tell me through. My recommendation is this, after running some averages, many of them, including throwing out the low and throwing out the high. If we were to just throw out Springfield, can't talk, throw out Groveland, which is a low on the high, I did my mouth right, it's 2102 an hour. If I add Groveland into the mix, leaving the high out, it reduces it to 2057 an hour. My recommendation is, let's pick a number, let's offer it to her, let's make it a point, put it in the writings, that we get our, that we move quickly. I think that works better. If we move quickly, we come up with an objective standard. I would hate to see anybody of this talent go in this economy or anytime, of any of our folks. And I think that solves the problem for the immediacy, she goes, she goes. But it solves the immediate concern and gets us on the hook to do the right thing that we realize we're deficient in, and we go forward. We're just beefing this up, I mean, we could all stay here. But I think that's ultimately the best solution in the short term. And I heard everything everybody said, believe it. But I think for this case, it's a special condition, and you're learning by it. And I think that's the best way out of this, right?
But now it's been carried as, it's amazing.
So you're looking to forego a merit-based program to have a.
In the immediate term, yes. In the, in the, in the short term, no. We need to set a timetable, whatever it is, two months to get the merit base in.
How long has she already waited? When did she tell you?
She talked to me about the week ago, and she put it.
It's been a couple weeks, I think, now, because this was supposed to be last week, so it was two weeks.
Yes. It was the week before, but they had the election, so that put them off, I guess, a little bit of what they're doing.
So does she have a timeline? Did she tell you like when she needed to know by or when she needed an answer? So why don't you guys, instead of deciding on a figure, find out what her timeline is and wait to the next meeting, which is only a couple weeks away, and put it on the agenda for them?
Well, I don't know.
Because honestly, that's two, two and a half weeks, you have a Labor Day weekend. That should give you guys plenty of time to copy and paste a merit standard, it's not that hard to do a merit plan for a performance eval for an employee. You can do that in two weeks, I can do it in a day, and put it on next month's agenda. And then that way, it's clear across the board.
I don't know what we're, so my opinion, everybody is, we have talent. I agree with everything Bob said, and I've seen in real life. If she's amenable to staying with a promise that we're really thinking very hard of doing this, I'm all for it. I hate to see her go.
No, and we're not trying to discredit that, that's not it. We're trying to, on the principle, granted, she need to be a great employee. But I can't go into my boss's office and tell them, "I got this job I have to me, I'm making $30,000 more an hour or a year, match it." Like, no one can go into their boss's office and manage it.
Actually, I've seen people do that all the time. You can go in and say, "I got another offer, I'm an employee." Do you want to make it? If it's not, I'm gonna take it. The decision is, does the employer feel the person is worth it in trying to make that dollar amount work or not? But that's very common when, listen, if you're good at your job and you make good money and other people know it and they offer you a lot more money, that is what happens all the time, all the time at AT&amp;T.
But government employees are never ready. Government employees, you're not gonna walk into Sheriff's Office and say, "I want a raise."
Not in a governmental agency.
That's not how that works. This is no different. You guys answer to the residents. There's gotta be a process and a policy in place to update, to just give her an arbitrary raise because you don't want to see her go. I give the confidence, what is two and a half more weeks if she's already waited two weeks? For you to do the proper thing and implement a policy and procedure so you don't get a whirlwind of more employees, because guess what? Even if you put that policy in place, that's not gonna supersede that you did it beforehand.
I guess if they offer it to her.
She's still gotta give you a two-week notice, guess what? Two-week notice, we're at the board meeting next month.
But she's gone, if she's already accepted. I think that's the problem, that's the urgent tension we're sensing, that's all.
But that's what I'm saying, if you guys go to her and say, "Okay, this is what we have in place, think of a number, this is what, but we have to wait till the next board meeting. We have to implement this correct process for the legality of it." Not because you're just a good employee. Nobody's performance employee just reads through a good employee. Granted, you've gotta take everything into consideration. You cannot just arbitrarily have a, as a government entity, and just arbitrarily give somebody a raise because, granted, the hourly may. Has she not come to you, you guys haven't even addressed this to the springtime?
Yes, but I, I think it's, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not disagreeing with doing the merit raise, but I don't think this is just arbitrarily giving her a raise. If, if, if the.
She just had a raise not even six months ago.
I understand, but she's due for a raise anyway coming up in a month. So my point is, if, if we don't show that we're interested, I.
So, my point is, if, if we don't show that we're interested, I, I don't know, if I was her, I'd probably say, even if I'm staying on hold.
How about this, if she's due for, if she's due for a raise in a month, give her that raise, that'll give you another two weeks to write up a merit plan, then you can address it and put it on the October board meeting. You're trying, you're doing something, you're just doing it the legal way, so it doesn't put the township at any risk of somebody coming back and biting it, biting you back in the butt. That's all I'm saying, if she's already due for a raise, give her that raise and tell her, we have to put this in plan, we cannot just do this, you are a government official, you are a government entity. This is taxpayer money, this isn't play money. You can pitch that to her, we wanna keep you, sit down with her, you and Patty both sit down with her, I'm sure, trust me, as an employee, I love when my boss, granted, I have another boss I answer to, but when the owner comes to me and sits down with me and says, you're doing a great job, boom, 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 I don't have to ask this of you, I appreciate you taking the initiative, I don't have to worry about this, granted, she may be Patty's deputy clerk, but guaranteed, if the both of you sit down and you give her the feedback that you were just giving us, that will give her merit to stay, wait. You've gotta give her that. Coming from Patty, granted, she works with Patty every day, how often does she sit down with you?
That might, if another candidate for the same job doesn't take it first, and she has to get in the position of, am I taking it or not?
Oh, I, I get it, and, and, and just echo what I've already said, is, we need to expedite a merit system program, that, we got a board meeting coming right up. I, I think Kerry is smart enough to know, she works for the government, that she has to understand that.
This is not gonna be a one-day.
This has to be a board and board. So, I guess, I, she can either wait, or she can go. I mean, we have, we have to have a procedure, and I think that if we can get this resolved by the next board meeting, which is right around the corner, I guess it's up to her whether she wants to stay or go. I, whether we give her that, that raise early that she's supposed to get, just to kinda tide her over, if you will, because there's nothing that says that we have to give it to her on this particular day, if that'll kinda show her, I guess, good faith money, okay? And then, by next board meeting, we can have it in place, if we have it in place. We just need to vote on it, okay?
That was the point I was trying to make, is why did it have to be now, I couldn't wait till.
Well, what's to stop her from bargaining? If you give her a raise now, she goes back to the other place, say, okay, well, they're gonna give me this, can you give me this?
The other, the other raise is significant.
Come on, I'm just saying.
Well, and, and, and she's gonna have to decide what she wants to do.
If she values her job here, she's gotta respect the rules and the laws and the ethics behind it. She knows she's not, you're not gonna get an answer today. It was, it's no different than any other board meeting, it usually gets talked about at one board meeting, and then it gets adjourned and brought up at the next board meeting for a final answer. She's actually in the win here, because you guys held us here, the next board meeting's two weeks away. She doesn't have to wait an entire month.
We're here to try to solve a problem.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't disagree with finding the hourly rate and being in competition with the surrounding departments, that's not it, at all, it's just doing it the ethical way.
I wanna see us solve a problem, I agree to hold it in.
Exactly.
So, we, we, this has to be a board decision, I agree. I, by the time the next board meeting comes up, that we could approve or deny, I'm sure we approve, a merit-based program, that'll give us a couple of weeks to draft it out. Um, if she can't wait that long, then I, I.
And she didn't wanna stay that badly anymore.
Exactly my point.
Yes, exactly.
Like I said, I, I find it very harsh to fill my applications only for the money.
Unless the offer, which is very good, closes and she has to make a decision.
That is exactly why I have to.
And I think that's a huge mistake, if we can placate her now, it's not extortion, I think it's a good decision. Get her on the hook now, we continue to do it, and if she doesn't like it at that point, then we have to let her go.
And we'll have to adjust the pay, or we won't get any applicants anyway, based on what's happened the last time. So, that is the crux of the issue, if the opportunity and the other one closes, then she's gotta make a decision, and we forced it to be the decision that I think we don't want. But, I'll do whatever the board wants.
Has anybody contacted Rose Township to find?
Yeah, I did. I did. I contacted, I did, yes, I just contacted to be sure that the, um, salary was the correct amount that they were offering.
It is, is Kerry even at the merit meeting yet?
I don't know.
I don't either, she haven't, she told us, she put her application in, and.
And you need to understand that why, the reason I am concerned about it is, not knowing she was looking, I have touted her virtues to a couple of the townships out here.
Oh, I'm sure, I, I'm sure that they would snap her up in a second, but how, how important?
And she's already done the minutes and stuff, well, Kerry does the minutes sometimes, I don't know if she still does it for Brandon, but she's done it for Rose too, so they already have some knowledge and, um, ability to gauge their reaction to using her, her resource, so. Again, that's, I mean, I think Jim, you hit it right on the head, it's, if the opportunity, if it does, it does, but then, I think the township's disadvantaged, because we need to get a newer employee, probably at a higher rate, and, and, and break them in all over again, and there's just a lot to learn in that job to get it done.
Well, then, then can I make a suggestion? If, if that's Jim's position, I, Jim's my friend, I, I, I respect Jim and I respect your opinion. I don't know how many people here share that opinion, I don't, but if Jim wants to make a motion that we just make a decision now, then that will be up to the board, I will vote against it, no harm, no foul, no disrespect, it's, it's my vote, it's my, my thought. So, if it passes, it passes, if it doesn't, it doesn't, I guess we'll have to see where we are, because we could talk about this all the way through dinner tomorrow.
I just have a question, does she have a salad job offer on the table? Or is it just, well, I applied for this job and this is how much it pays?
I don't know the answer to that, because, I don't know the answer to that, cause I don't think I would want to call the other township and say, are you hiring her? I think that's kinda meddling in it.
Well, it would be as simple as asking Kerry, have you had an interview and have they offered you a position?
I thought that's what brought all this up, I didn't realize she could simply fill out an application.
I, I don't know. She turned in her resume, but they already have working experience with her, cause she's been doing their minutes. So, I'm just saying, if, I, I don't know if she said no, but, but she has working experience with them, she knows of the offer, she turned it in, it's attractive to her, cause it's a lot more money.
So, if we don't know, if she's actually got a job offer then, why cannot those wait till two weeks for the next board meeting?
Exactly.
Because I think Jim's point earlier was, if the opportunity closes, she may have to take it before then, and we won't have more to do.
This might work.
But they haven't even interviewed.
I'm sorry.
They haven't even interviewed.
You don't even know.
You don't even know if she's like, offered the position.
But this still might work. I think we agree, this is the lowest grade. I don't think, subjectively, there's any harm in saying, okay, we're gonna give you a raise, when, now, a month, whatever, but disclose we're giving her a raise, let's, see what that is, and we'll, we'll determine it now, even if it's a dollar, it's a show of faith, with the understanding in this board that we're gonna, as soon as possible, come after some objective standard, as I call it, for merit pay increases, but, but I think it's more, I think it's to evaluate the entire evaluation process and the timing and everything. Maybe that solves all these problems in the short term, I hate to say, we're only on the hook for a dollar raise for a minimal amount of time, she's due for a raise anyway. Give her the buck. I agree, it may set a precedent, but in the short term, I'll take that gamble in however long it takes us to come up with a system.
I don't think it sets a precedent, because we already have in place that she is due for a raise.
So, she gets that amount.
Give her the raise and then.
And then we get the system in place. If she hasn't even interviewed and hasn't even given a job offer, why are we having this meeting, why does it have to be decided tonight?
Then, I'm sorry, didn't interrupt.
No, you're fine.
Then, then all we have to do is agree on that amount.
With a merit-based system?
No, to follow.
To follow.
To follow.
To follow. She's gonna get a raise anyway.
Yeah.
Give her the buck, because we can, it's already in there. In, in the meantime, we can put a, a merit-based system.
What's the raise she's supposed to be getting?
In, in effect, we can hold that as the next year.
She just gets her.
So, she's, she's.
Step.
The step raise is five hundred.
Five hundred she's due for.
So, and, and what I would limit to have here, is a dollar an hour to me is two thousand dollars a year, roughly. So, that's a start, it, it puts it commensurate to the second lowest.
That's two thousand a year based on forty hours.
Forty hours a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, I have to normalize it somehow.
Fifteen seventy.
What I'm saying is, she doesn't even have a standing offer, so I don't understand why she stays on track for her.
We don't know that, for sure.
No, right, but that's what I'm saying, if we don't know, there's too many variables with her position, so I think you guys as a township board would be doing the residents and township injustice if you didn't collect all the facts and put this off for another two weeks, getting the system in place, so you don't have to come back and have something bite you in the rear. Sit down, Patty and Bob, sit down with her, say, you are due for this raise, this is on the next meeting agenda, which is two and a half weeks from here, this is what we're basing it off of, and your decision for your raise will be based on this evening, on that evening's meeting. Like you said, she works in government, she knows that this is not gonna take a one-day deal. I mean, why, why has it taken eight months for the firefighter to get insurance, but yeah, we have a, hold a special meeting, we have to make a decision on this one part-time employee, that, that is an anode.
In part because the way we're going to do the health insurance to stay within that state guideline requires a change in some laws, that we just gotta document.
From here to there, in January, the laws were the same, it's a year.
No, they, no, they aren't, that's why I said they're changing.
This last January, eight months ago, when they were, yeah.
There wasn't a way, there was not a way to do what we're going to do.
What I'm saying is, this meeting, to make a decision today, is absolutely injustice to the tax, to the taxpayers, to come up with a, honestly, if we all know that, if we only know she turned in her resume, a thousand and one things could happen.
But, but we don't all know, that's all she did to that.
Okay, so anyhow, let's make a motion.
I was gonna say, are you ready to make a motion, Jim?
I have a little idea for that, this is, she's due the raise, the month. We go with ten, ten, give her half of what they're thinking, that, for now, and then two weeks, we have our, hopefully, our merit system set up, and then follow through, and at least that, that has, we all know she does excellent out of work, so to me, it's just basically figuring out, what, what is the raise she's gonna get, period, you know what I'm saying? And then, after the two weeks, okay, we got our merit system, you have this, she did right out of this, she don't have to ask her, she comes in early, she goes up and, you know, up beyond that everything, I mean.
If Kerry is, is an exceptional employee, as you keep stating, all of these things, if you sit down with her and give her open communication and tell her what the plan is, then she has a reason to stay and value your opinion, and she values you guys as coworkers.
And that would let her know that we are.
But you have to keep the lines of communication open.
We're trying to do it the right way.
Okay, so, you're.
So, so you wanna run that bullshit motion, right?
You know me, I.
Patty, you didn't.
Yeah.
Is your motion to give her her step raise that she's got coming due now anyway?
At least now.
Implement a merit-based evaluation and let her know that as soon as we get that done, we'll reevaluate it for possible adjustment to the salary.
Correct.
I'm not trying to word it, I'm just asking, is that what you want?
That shows our good faith, where she's due the money anyway, so she's added early, that's letting her know we are on the ball, she knows that, she said that we have to, we have to put something in place for it, cause other, excuse me, you know, the fire department side or, and, you know, the other girls in the office, but this would show a, a good faith, and then we would have at least a guideline to go along, and it's not going out of her, her annual step that she's supposed to be getting, but she's getting it early, and she's, we're telling her that we are going to put something in place, or a merit system, and we all know that she can pass the merit system once we get it in place.
And put it on the September board meeting, it's two and a half weeks away.
I'm asking, is that your motion?
That is my motion. What's the dollar value of that motion?
Five hundred bucks is a step that would come in.
She's due a five hundred dollar. But then, like you're saying, the two, up to two thousand, depending on the step what we figured, in two weeks, that could be implemented, but it's not going out of the guidelines of what we already have in place.
And it wouldn't piggybackside the other, because you give her the step raise, as soon as we have a merit system in place in, let's say, next meeting, two weeks, we can immediately move forward on that.
Yeah.
So, it's not a long period of time before she gets what she wants anyway.
I would accept that as a minimum, uh, motion, subjectively, I'd like to see a double.
Two-way double?
Five hundred to a thousand.
Okay, but, well, first, she made a motion, so let me make sure we keep this straight, we have to see if someone seconds the motion, and if not, another motion could be entered, but if it's seconded, and you still wanna do that, then it would have to be a second motion.
So, let's do mine first, since I was going down. I like her motion, but a thousand dollars instead of five hundred.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Not for me. Here's a problem I have with that, and I'm gonna go back to Gail, because she will get the same step raise as Kerry would. So, all this step raises, and it's already in place, it's already budgeted, and we already agreed upon it, it, it's not good faith money, it's, it's a step raise, we're just giving it to her early to demonstrate to her that we appreciate that she is in fact a valued employee, and next time that we, the board meets, we can vote on a merit-based system increase, this whole thing is only gonna take a month, you can say, oh, no offense to you, but you can say, it, it, it'd be a thousand dollars, but how do you break that down for two weeks? It really doesn't matter, the step raise is a step raise, both deputies get the same step raise, because that's what's budgeted in from the last budget meeting. Then, we make up the whole difference based on the merit system.
Okay, well, we don't have a second, so let's default to the first one, say it again, five hundred dollars, sorry.
Okay, well, that, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to it?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board?
No.
Any from the audience? Okay, anything at all?
Uh, Robert DePaulo?
I guess yes.
Uh, Shelly Kidd?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
D.O. Jason?
Yes.
And, uh, let's say it's, I'm not sure this merit thing should be incurred either, I have to be honest, I guess that should.
Well, if you wanna say more as an employee, I guess the more expeditiously we do it.
Let's, 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 we're arguing about P's here. Okay, all righty, uh, nothing else that I think discussed on, really, at this time, we'll just wait till we get the, just the merit-based document ready?
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any from the audience? Motion to adjourn is in order. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all, okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody.